Okay, I think we're good to go, Chairman.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody, and welcome to Dorlish Town Council Planning Committee on the 12th of November 2020. Let's take us through the agenda to start things off. I'll take everything as read on here, if that's all right. So obviously, we are recording this meeting and it is being live on Facebook. Can I ask members to have their mobile phones turned off? And first of all, really, do we have any members of the public who wish to speak this evening at all, please? Andrew?
Not currently, Chairman, and I'm not aware of anybody wishing to attend.
Thank you. In that case, can I ask for any apologies for absence, please?
Just an apology from councillor Foden.
I've had an apology from councillor Townley, and I was hoping she would have already told you as well, but if not, I'll pass that on to you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Morehead is on her way. I think she's experiencing technical difficulties.
Okay, thank you. Can I ask members to mute themselves unless they wish to speak, just to count there seems to be a bit of a bit of feedback or something on the line, that might just be my thing. But anyway, we don't have an agenda item part two, so we don't need to look at that. But we do need to think in terms of any declarations of interest. Any members at all to raise a hand if they've got any declarations of interest in this evening's agenda? No? Okay. Any dispensations received?
None, Chairman.
Thank you. And have members had a chance to have a look at the minutes of the last meeting? And if so, is everybody happy for me to sign it as an accurate record of the meeting? Can I see a share of hands? Thank you. Okay, thank you. So we'll take that as read, if that's all right. Can I ask for an update on correspondence, please, Andrew?
Chairman, it's, as previously circulated earlier this afternoon, would it be helpful if I shared the screen so that we can have that there?
That would be great, yes. I suppose the convention is we've had Yola reading it out, but we don't have to. Members are happy to have a look at it on the screen, and I think that'll be just as good. Thank you.
Okay, bear with me. Can you see that, Chairman?
It's just loading at the moment, but taking its time, I'm afraid. There we go.
I can see it.
Okay, excellent. So we'll just run through those. I won't read them out, but you can see there are some of the items there that have been have gone before Timbridge District Council and where they've gone from. So we've had notification of them. Okay. Any members have any questions on any of them as we just scroll through them? If you would like to just raise your hand or your electronic hand, I think, because I can only see myself at the moment. Okay. So I think the last one was one that we had quite a debate about, if I recall, members. The drive, and that's anyone to to kind of underline from that point of view. Councillor Heath, you have your blue hand raised.
It was only one. Did we get any reason on the flat roof one in Cockwood why they refused?
I was going to ask exactly the same question.
That's, that's, I guess I'm assuming I'll ask Andrew if there are any other notes of them that we have in front of us. But I will look into that one and see if there's anything further.
Just bear with me, Chairman, and I'll get the decision noticed out.
Thank you.
I was only thinking if he comes back again, it will help us guide us why they turned it down. That was all, because it'd probably come back.
It was refused for the following reason. The proposed wraparound dorma is visually detrimental to the existing property and harmful to the character and appearance of the local landscape and setting of the Cockwood Conservation Area. And therefore, contrary to local plan policies, S1 Sustainable Development Criteria, S2 Quality Development, WE8 Domestic and Ancillary Buildings and Boundary Treatments, and EN5 Heritage Assets of Timbridge Local Plan 2013-2033, and the National Planning Policy Framework.
Quite a few reasons.
Okay.
I think it was, if I may, Chair, it was
Yeah, please carry on.
It wasn't the prettiest extension.
And I think it was quite large, wasn't it?
Well, I think it was a small house and a small extension, but because the house was small, it did look a little bit unbalanced, but I think on balance, we felt it was acceptable, but obviously it fell the other side of the line.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll move on from that, if that's okay. And we will go on to items for this evening's consideration.
Chairman.
Welcome, councillor Morehead.
I've gone round the reeking to get back, sorry.
Okay, absolutely fine, thank you. We're just about to start on the items for this evening, so your timing is pretty good, really, if that's okay. Are you happy to share the screen, please, Andrew? Thank you.
If you want to, just let me know when you want to move slides, Chairman.
Yeah, that's absolutely fine. So we're looking at three priory gardens, and all is sure, yeah. Lower ground floor timber decking and change to windows and doors. So if you can, we can have a look at where that is on the map, please. Thank you. So priory gardens, just backing on to the high street, just a bit higher up the hill. So they're kind of back to front houses. The lower floors are the bedrooms, I think, and the upper floors are living areas. That's right. Can we have a look at the plans, please? Thank you. Yeah, so there we go, we're going where we are at the moment, and what the proposal is. Thank you. Okay. I'm hoping members have already had a look at this anyway. Have we got some photographs to have a look at as well? Okay, yeah. So that's the front of the property. As I say, it's kind of upside down, really.
That's the only photograph that was provided on the planning portal, Chairman.
That's fine, that's fine. Okay. Okay, everyone happy with that? Will, if we could come back to I can't see any blue hands at the moment, but has anyone got anything they'd like to say about this item?
Councillor Martin Heath. Just wondering if there are any letters of objection. I haven't seen any on, I've looked it up, but there might be something in there.
As of today, I haven't seen any, so I think we're no, we can take it as there's no objections. So councillor Martin Heath, you have your blue hand up.
Just a question.
Can we come back? Yeah.
Yeah. Priory Gardens, is it a conservation area there?
No.
I tried to look and I couldn't see for sure on my plan.
Right, I thought it was. Right, okay, because that might make a big difference.
It's just these, where the actual back of the house is, is at the back of High Street, so it's just up the hill from the High Street. So I think it's just outside the conservation area.
Right, okay.
Councillor Taylor, you have your electronic hand up.
Thank you, Chair. No, to the best of my recollection, it's just outside of the conservation area. I think Priory Hill and Priory Road are both in the conservation area, but not Priory Gardens. Notwithstanding that, I don't have any objection to these plans for this larger deck to the rear. I think it looks relatively modest. I think it's perfectly acceptable in terms of its scale in terms of, and I don't, it hasn't been drawn out right to the boundary adjacent property, which it adjoins. There has been some space left, so I think it's a very, very appropriate development.
Okay, thank you for that. Oh, I thought there was another blue hand. Councillor Morehead, have you changed your mind?
I was simply going to say a similar thing, Madam Chair, that it's a good sized plot. This development doesn't impinge on the boundaries. I can see that it will be visible from downhill, because we're talking about something up on a hill. Yeah, I don't think it looks that different from what it is now, if you see what I mean, just looking straight at it.
No, absolutely. And it is, it's about changing the windows to doors onto that patio, though it's basically a lead out from the bedrooms into the garden from, as I see it. Okay, so does anyone else have anything else to say about this?
I'll happily second Gary's proposal.
It did sound like a proposal, councillor Wrigley. I'll see if councillor Taylor is happy to make it as such. Councillor Taylor?
Yes, happy to propose
So as set out, councillor Taylor.
Indeed.
Okay, lovely. And we've had that seconded. Can we I can't see all yours, so we'll have to go with blue hands, I'm afraid. Can you put your hands up if you are in favour? Thank you.
Can't see a blue hand, sorry.
Okay.
I can see everybody, Chairman, so if everybody does want to use a physical hand as well, that's fine, and I can toss it up.
All right, that's fine. I think that's everybody, I think. It is, thank you. Right, let's go on to the next item then, please. And that's 2001 8558 Oak Hill. And this is a two storey, sorry, nine, sorry, nine Oak Hill. Yeah, I was just saying the number wrong. It's a two-storey rear extension, I was trying to say. Okay. So that's the existing.
All right.
Oh.
It's not.
There we go. It's quite a sizable extension, but it's going out to the rear of Oak Hill, and I think that's the side of, is that the Luskum property? I don't think it's imposing on any of the buildings behind it at all, is it? That isn't the other side, it's on that side of the road that's on the Luskum side as opposed to the Third Avenue side of Oak Hill. Have we actually got a map area again, please? Andrew, if you, yeah, thank you. Okay, yeah, so it's just before the actual fire station. You can see there, just on Oak Hill. So it is on the Luskum side. I was just trying to establish which side of Oak Hill it was. Okay, thank you. So if we could have, again, there's the existing ground floor and first floor. It's quite a small imagery, I know, and the proposal. Again, I checked this morning and there wasn't any criticisms, any statements from any neighbours that were unhappy at all about this. No letters of objection is really what I'm saying. Does any members have anything they'd like to say? Councillor Morehead, you have your blue hand.
I have had my blue hand, yeah.
I beg your pardon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, obviously, I'm familiar with this. It's just up the road from where I am. Where it backs on to is Parkleigh, a sort of electricity board substation or whatever, Parkleigh Luskum, corner of the fire station property. I can't see any problem with it. There is nobody directly affected by it. So I would like to propose that we raise no objections.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Taylor, you have your blue hand raised. What did you want to contribute to this item, please?
Thank you, Chair. I'm of the same view, actually. It's quite a good looking extension with, you know, a good hip roof in the same style as the original house. It's not, it's not it doesn't impinge too much into the rear garden, and I don't think it has any impact, any noticeable impact on the neighbours. In fact, it might make a nice little sun trap in that corner, being south-west facing. So from that point of view, I'd be happy to second the proposal.
Okay, so we have a proposal to accept this as set out with no objections, and we've had that seconded. So at this stage, members, can I ask you to vote to see whether you accept that proposal, please? Electronically or by your hand? Thank you.
Unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the next item. Thank you. And we now go to 20 Park Rise, 2001 935. This is the raising of a garage roof. Quite a difficult one to visualize, I think, from the plan, when I looked at this earlier. And this is in the Oakland Estate. You'll be able to tell that, really, I think, from the from the photographs. There are quite a few photographs that go with this one. And what this involves is a connection between a house and its nearby garage. So a raised section of roof to allow doorway going from a landing in the property into the property's garage. It is actually to the side of the property.
Councillor Morehead has a hand up, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Morehead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. A few comments about this one. I have, as you have, obviously, I've spent a lot of time looking at this, and I know the estate well. It was an award-winning estate. It's an awkward proposal, really, because it's from a half landing. There are steps up to that and then steps down into the garage. And like you see, what they're trying to do is form an entrance at the top of these steps, if you like, to get in and out of the garage. I would have two or three things to say. One, it's not really a planning matter, but I think it's an awful shame to change the design. That is a block of three attached garages. It just, theirs is attached to their house. The other two are not attached other than to each other. I I'm really concerned, they say a polycarbonate roof, which I think is totally inappropriate when you look at the standard of the rest of the buildings there. And I'm wondering if it sets well, because it won't set a precedent in that block, but it might set a precedent in other blocks where garages are attached, and in some cases, not just to the owner's house. It's a complicated development, that whole area. So I just have reservations about it.
Okay, thank you, councillor Morehead. Councillor Taylor, you have your blue hand raised.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I have exactly the same concerns about the roof, the twin wall acrylic roof. I'm not sure how well that would play with building regs, but certainly, we've just heard about, you know, another scheme that wasn't approved by officers because of poor design. I think this one actually would fall into the same category. I'm not against the principle of joining the house to the garage. Though, given the amount of space that the steps will take up, it would seem that it's either a very small car that's going to be in that garage, or it's going to become so it's going to have some other use, but there are, I don't think parking is a particular issue there, so hopefully they've got other parking arrangements they could make. But I don't think it's a good enough design, so I don't think I could support it in its current form.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Heath, you have your electronic hand up. What do you want to add to the debate, please?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Right, thank you. Yes, I'm trying to work out, perhaps we need to see if it's on your list and put it on the screen, what they actually put in their letter for the purposes of it, because at the moment, I'm puzzled to think what the purpose is of this conversion is. It's not to make the garage bigger. It's not for accommodation for the house. It can't just be access, is it? Do they actually say on their letter of application, normally the sort of number one bit of correspondence?
I don't believe they have to put I don't believe they have to put an explanation like that.
Yeah.
The details on the agenda, Chairman, is the proposal is raising of garage roof.
Yeah, that doesn't turn it enough, though, does it? If that's what it says, I agree, and I don't like polycarbonate. Polycarbonate these days is being taken out because it's very noisy. It's not really a good, it's a temporary building material. It's not really a proper building material.
Okay. And councillor Morehead, you have, I don't know if you still had another point to make, or no, your electronic hand has just gone.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I believe somewhere in all of it, it does mention about access to workshop or something like that, but don't quote me. But my other concern is, we've had other place applications in the past where people have wanted to join a garage directly into the house. And this would go directly, as I see it, into a hallway, or the hallway down some steps. And I have concerns about the health and safety aspect of that, with fumes getting into the living accommodation.
I think members seem to be agreed that you're not comfortable with either the building materials or the design of the item, of the proposed raising of the garage roof. But I'm not hearing a proposal. Is anyone happy to put a proposal to potentially refuse this? And if so, what are the planning reasons, please?
Councillor Morehead has a hand up, Chairman.
Thank you, councillor Morehead.
I would like to propose that we recommend refusal of this on the basis of poor design and potentially health and safety.
Do any of the members have anything to add to that? Thank you, councillor Morehead. We'll see if that item is seconded by anyone. I have councillor Heath, who has his electronic hand raised.
I was just going to second that, perhaps being able to think of a toughening up the proposal a little bit as well.
Okay, oh, we have a proposal that's been seconded, poor design and health and safety issues. Has anyone else got anything to add? We have had it seconded, so we can look to vote on the proposal we have in front of us at the moment. Okay.
Sorry, Chair, councillors Taylor and Wrigley have their hands up.
Okay, thank you. Councillors, in that order.
Yes.
Because, yeah, thank you, councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Chair. I think it would be worthwhile stating not only poor design, but poor material specification.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's good.
I'm happy to add that to the proposal.
I was just about to ask you. Thank you, councillor Morehead. And are you happy to second the proposal based on that, councillor Heath? Thank you. Councillor Wrigley, can I ask for your input, please?
Just a couple of things. I'm not sure that health and safety is a planning reason. I'm not sure that will be taken by them as a planning reason. So I understand, I agree with what's been said so far. I'm still slightly puzzled. Are these two buildings on the same base level, or is the house lower down than the garage?
There is a cross-section at number 17.
Ah, right. So there are, yeah, there's the stairs proposed for the garage.
Okay, so it's about a half a level difference, okay?
Yeah.
I was just trying to visualize it, and I couldn't quite get the levels straight in my head. Thank you.
Okay, so we have a proposal before us, refusal of this item, poor design and poor material specification. And we'll leave the health and safety item as at the moment. So members, can you show their support or otherwise?
I'm happy to amend according to that.
Thank you, councillor Morehead. So if members could vote to see whether they support or not that proposal, please.
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item. This is 2001 868, and this is Shatner's Yard, Strand Hill. And I have this as a change of roofing material, relocation of bin storage area, design and layout change, and increase in height of building to amend elevations. And this is the property that, I think the best way to describe it, I guess, is it backs on to the cooperative car park, and it sketches out quite an elongated kind of arc between mid and lower Strand Hill. And there's quite a few apartments and houses that have been placed in there, all flats that have been put in there. Does everyone know where we are with that? Hopefully, you do.
May I just come in because
Yes, councillor.
I'm not on the screen, so I don't know. All I'm having very difficult tonight, because everything is so small. And when you're talking, I actually can't read the details that are on the screen. So
Have you had a chance?
I'm using my computer, because I couldn't get on the iPad. But I have noticed, even this morning, when I was going through with Kimbridge, everything seemed to be very, very small print.
Yes, some of these plans, when they look they've got, yeah, and if you enlarge it, you can't actually read all of it, I must admit, from that point of view. And obviously, we're looking at this under a different a different system. Andrew, can I see if you can enlarge that any further at all for councillor Alba?
I think the difficulty is, Chairman, that the when we copy that over into a presentation, because the image is so large anyway, if we were to zoom in on it, we wouldn't be able to fit it all in on one slide, because you're not actually viewing the original document. Obviously, if you were to log in through the planning portal and view it that way, then yes, you would get the detail.
I couldn't get it.
That's fine. Okay, thank you.
It's too small.
Okay, well, councillor Morehead, do you have your electronic hand raised?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, we do know, all know where this is. It is actually, or was originally, a rather strange design, very innovative, trying to get in several units into a not very large space. And although I can see they are changing roof lines and so forth, to my mind, it doesn't make a big difference from the sort of Himalayas design that is there already. So I don't know how we could object, but I wouldn't want to be worrying about water ingress from the roof gullies in the future, but there are an awful lot of them. So personally, I wouldn't object, because it's already almost a fait accompli, and this is just an adjustment to angles and so forth. As far as I could make out, like councillor Lowther said, it's not been easy. I've plowed through the Timbridge site, and I've had my glasses on and my magnifying glass out, and even then, it's not easy. But I think the diagrams, the lines show it a little better. But thank you.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Morehead. Do any other members have anything to say about this one, please?
Just for the benefit of councillors, in future, if you find one like this, the trick is to find the little red label that says PDF on the right-hand side and the details, and that downloads a bigger version of the document. You can then explode up, which then has far better detail and clear writing, which is what I'm looking at at the moment. So it does, you can zoom in on that PDF when it downloads, far better than just on the page that is displayed in the document portal.
Okay. Thank you for that, councillor Wrigley. Councillor Taylor, you have your electronic hand raised. You'd like to?
Thank you, thank you, Chair. This building's already built, isn't it?
It is, yes.
Yeah, so.
I think these are details, so change of roofing materials, relocation of bin storage, et cetera. So it's, it's like design layout changes and increase, slight increase in height.
Okay, so it's effectively a retrospective for the height, because it's already been built, um, and the roofing materials. But they may be cha- changing the, the bin storage area and it's, yeah. I, I, I actually like the design of, of this, uh, for, for what it's worth. Um, it, it is, as councillor Moore, councillor Moore had said, very, very innovative. Um, and I think it does a good job of bringing light into the respective, uh, units. Uh, while not, while not, um, being too imposing, um, on, on the street scene, so the street scene, it's at the, it's, it's, the most. You see of these buildings is from the co-op car park. Um, it, it makes a welcome addition to the co-op car park street scene.
Yeah, okay.
So no, no objection from me.
Okay, thank you. Are you happy to make that as a proposal, councillor Taylor, or?
I am.
Or you want to wait, see if, you, okay, thank you. So you're happy to accept it, propose as, as no objection. Um, councillor Wrigley, I see you have your electronic hand raised.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Um, just slight sort of technical detail.
Yeah.
I don't think I have any objection to this, but I can't see anywhere on the plans. Where it describes what the change in roof material actually is.
Yeah.
Or the windows are actually going to be stored. So there is a slight lack of detail in the plan application that doesn't really tell us what they're changing. Everything, all the other documents appear to be photographs of where the, where the, uh, um, site, um. Uh, notices have been, have been put. Um, and that seems to be about it, so I, I don't like not having the information that, that they are. Trying to get us to, um, approve.
I, I appreciate what you're saying, I, I kind of think that councillor Taylor hit the nail on the head, really, this is, um, this is a variation on what's already been built. Um, so the materi- you're right, the, the, what, what we're, we're almost being asked to take a leap of faith from that point of view. Um, and, um, accept that this, these changes, we think are small changes, have been made. And, um, they're not as per the original plans, so.
In, in, indeed, but it would be nice when they say they're asking permission to alter something. That's what they've done.
To inform us?
Yes.
Yes, I pre- tech, point taken. Councillor Heath, you have your electronic hand raised.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, it seems, I've been searching while you lot have been talking and I can't find, unless you know where it is. Uh, what materials they're going to. Um, I guess we should also know what it's from, because it doesn't even say that unless any of us who walk past know what it is. But are they saying anywhere what they're going to use instead of? Because I would not be of a mind to approve something, it doesn't say what it is, because I'd be giving them carte blanche to put anything on there. So it would be a no from me unless you can find it.
No, I think this is, I think this is a, um, asking for permission as variation, that this has already been done. But I agree, there isn't clarity on to what.
No, it's not good enough.
Was supposed to have been used and what, um, what has been used now. Um, councillor Morehead, you, you're next to, to speak, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, yes, I'm, I don't know whether we can do this, but. Are we in a position to be able to say that we are able to reach, to decide on a recommendation without further information regarding, uh, materials used?
And to be used.
Pardon?
And to be used.
I think it's, I think it would, I mean, please correct me if I'm wrong, Andrew, but I would say that what you're, what you're proposing is to turn it down on those grounds. Councillor Morehead, but we already have a proposal, but I don't believe it's been seconded.
Um, that would be a, an obvious one, I suppose, to recommend refusal, um. Due to insufficient information regarding materials.
Yeah, and we, we, we cry, requiring clarification on, on materials, et cetera. Okay, um, oh, I've seen a bit of change in hands going up now, I've got, now I've got councillor Wrigley.
Uh, thank you, Chair, yes. So the block of text to the left of the diagram there. Does have a list of seventeen changes, which is fine. And it's large panels admitted, larger windows, smaller window, amended window, smaller window. Bell cast lower than, whatever a bell cast is. There's smaller window, but not one of those is the roof nor the bin stores.
No.
That's, that's the strange thing. And then more text under the proposed flank elevation, you can see sort of to the centre.
Yeah.
Right of that, which does talk about roofs, eaves and fascias. Walls, windows and doors and RWGs, whatever they are. None of that tells us what's changed, so it is very much. Nothing there.
Yeah, bell cast, but bell, bell cast, by the way, is a little concrete strip with a stainless steel bit in it, which is a difference between two renders, that's the normal one.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
Um. Councillor Heath, councillor Taylor, you have your electronic blue hand raised.
Uh, thank you, Chair, RWG is rainwater goods.
Yes.
So, uh, so if you, if you look at the, uh, the letter that accompanies this planning application from Pilcher. Planning consultancy limited, it does give more detail. It's an application for variation of condition ones to substitute drawings for amendments to the elevations, da 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 da. Um. So they are, they are minor amendments, there's no statutory definition of a minor material amendment according to, uh, this, uh. Uh, to, to the applicant, um, so they've, they've got changes like, for instance, approved elevations. Um. Uh, seeking to replace that approved. The building has been constructed to the approved shape, height and layout and the changes are largely limited to differences in the fenestration and cladding. A handrail has been added to the stairs into unit eight on the flank elevation. A satellite dish has been installed on the front wall of unit two, bearing in mind this is courses in its conservation area. There is the construction of two additional steps to the communal and unit two entrance doors. From variation of the internal finish, finished door floor level only. A comparison of the approved and proposed drawings show that the approved roof height and shape has been constructed. Most of these minor changes are the result of construction requirements once accurate site levels were known. An alteration to the internal layout as required by building regs. There's no adverse visual impact resulting from the minor alterations listed above, which, um. I, I think we've just got to take on, 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 uh, take as read.
Okay, thank you, councillor Taylor. Councillor Wrigley, I've got your electronic hand up. Councillor Lowther, you did mention you wanted to speak as well, so I'll bring you in afterwards if that's okay.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Based on that and based what's written on the plans, that is entirely consistent and entirely reasonable and I see no problem with that. I think my only issue is the description of the proposal and perhaps that's an error on, uh, on Timbridge's listing. Behalf that describes relocation of bin storage area, design and layout changes and increase in height of building.
Yes.
Though I don't think any of what they put in the description is accurate. But based on the plan and the letter, I have no problem with it.
Okay, thank you. Um, councillor Lowther, you've been very, very patient, thank you, please.
It's very difficult not to be able to see the full, the full screen. Um, I'm not really happy with this at all. And as councillor Wrigley picked me to the post. On, actually, they're not telling us what materials are being used. And it is actually a proposal for that, not, oh, well, it's okay, they've done it. I still think we should know exactly what is being proposed and what materials they're using. And I definitely am not happy with the wording of the application.
Okay, thank you. Um, councillor Morehead.
Thank you, Madam Chair, sorry to bother you again.
That's all right.
After having further information, uh, read to us, I, as I say, I've struggled through it, but I can't remember it all, my printer's gone, so. Um, so I'm working on notes tonight. Um. I would be happy to withdraw my proposal, but I would suggest that if we are minded to, um. Raise no objections, or perhaps to be subject to materials being as in the original application. Because if they were passed, passed in the original one, we can't change it and as long as they're still the same, then it's not a problem.
It clearly says changing. Change.
It, it does count. It does, councillor Lowther, but the, the items that councillor Taylor read up, it made them, it was very minor, it was, it was, um. Minor or small areas, and I didn't actually hear anything about new roofing materials, but I appreciate your point. Um, okay, so we, we now have one proposed on the table. Um, following councillor Morehead withdrawing her proposal to reject this, um, item. We have a proposal from councillor Taylor, who is happy to propose this as read, I haven't had that seconded. Um.
I'd, I'd be happy to second that, subject to clarification that the description of the application is entirely erroneous. It's based on the details in the letter and the plan that we're looking at. And not, it's got nothing to do with changing the roofing or the bin stores or the height of the building.
Yeah, it's, it's, it doesn't make sense, does it? So I, I appreciate that point and if that can be included, I think that's the, that makes absolute sense. Councillor Morehead, you have your electronic hand raised.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Could I just ask as a, an amendment, if you like, if councillor Taylor is willing? That the, um, matter I raised, that's subject to materials being as in the original proposal.
Councillor Taylor?
Um, so the materials. Do we know what was in the, what was in the, um, original proposal?
Well, Timbridge will.
Well, the, so having looked it up on, um, I've got a PDF where you can zoom in quite tightly. I did do that a minute ago, uh, so. That's not the one. Boom, there we are. So the roof is steel clad. Uh, orio windows clad with large boarding and roof of matching steel cladding.
Okay.
That's surface which were grey, da da da. Um. So, yeah, the, the, but the, the proof of the pudding is going down, have a look at it. It looks, it looks great, so I don't have any objection, uh, to the roof materials that they've used, because I can see them and they look great. So I.
Sorry, Chair, and I don't think they've changed. So I don't think we can say subject to the.
Yeah.
This was the new material, because I think there'd be no change of roof materials. I think there is no change to the bin store, there is no change to the height of the building, it's a list of changes that we have on the plans.
Yeah, I think what we're fighting, we're fighting that what's the actual wording of the item, um, before us. So I think we'll, we'll take the item, um, as per the detail that we're seeing on the plans in front of us and, um. And stay securing those from that point of view. Um, councillor Heath, you have your electronic hand, was there something else you wanted to add just before we go to a?
Yes.
Go to a vote.
I agree with one of our other councillors who not very happy with it. Um, the thing is, we can't double guess what they really mean, we're a bit asked on the table to change approval for a different roofing. We've just discovered it's steel, um, so in fact, the new roofing might be tiles or lead. But the point is, it's not clear, so I couldn't support something that doesn't clearly say what it's doing, because I'm not actually approving something I don't know. That's the only comment I've got.
Okay, thank you, councillor Heath. Um. We have a, a proposal in front of us to accept as it out, but, um, materials, um, as detailed on the, um. The papers rather than the actual, um, details on the actual proposal, I think is, is the important thing here. Councillor Taylor, you have your electronic hand, am I kind of, am I garbling your proposal, I'm sorry, please, please carry on.
Okay, so, so what we, what we have here today is variation application. This variation application is to vary a previous variation application seventeen double O four three eight. Which in turn was to vary a previous variation condition, variation application fifteen O one four three two. So the original application has been changed, this is the third change to bring, to bring in line what has been built. Uh, to, to the conditions that had previously applied, so they are minor tweaks. I think that, I think the letter spouts it out very, very, uh, succinctly. Uh, so, but the variation two, which was the first variation on the original planning application, was for the change of roofing materials. The relocation of bin storage, the design and layout changes and increase in height of the building. We approved that a long, long time ago, since then, we've had, already had one variation and this is a second. So I don't know whether that makes people, members feel more comfortable or less comfortable, uh, with, with, with what they're looking at today. But from my voice.
No, that's.
I, I, you know, my, my, no objection and, and still stands.
No, I, I, I totally, I've seen that from now, I've seen those two, um, yeah, that makes perfect sense to me. Yeah. Um, okay, well, we've had a proposal, we've had a second, uh, let's see if members are happy to accept that as it is. Um, if not, we will then look to, to debate and continue further. So if members can raise their hand if they accept that we take as set out.
But I ask that we repeat the proposal, please, because I've got a bit mixed up along there.
And councillor Taylor, I'm going to ask you to do that, please.
No objection.
Chair, may I? May I jump in with something I've noticed?
Councillor, councillor Wrigley, carry on.
Sorry, Chair. What councillor Taylor has just explained, that this is a variation of a variation of a variation. Starts to make sense of what is written.
Yeah.
Because I notice now there are brackets in the description. If you take away what's inside the brackets. It's a variation of condition one on planning permission to amend elevations. That's what we're looking at.
Right.
The bracket, the description of the previous application. Which changed the various different bits and pieces that we cannot see on this current application. So this application simply changes the elevations. Hence the description in the file of.
Yeah.
Window, larger window, archwood window, may, maybe.
Yeah.
Entirely consistent with a variation of condition one, which is normally to be built as per the plans. So what they've said is, what they're trying to say here, I think. In this long convoluted title.
Yes.
Is, it's a variation to change the walls, because they've got slightly different windows in most of the places and some other twiddly bits, including. Uh, a bell, whatever it was, and a, um, and a satellite dish. And in that light, I'm very happy that what is here is stated as what it is and it's nothing to do with roofing. It's nothing to do with bin stores, that was the previous application that had been changing other things. And so everything is actually straight, but really rather convolutedly laid out. I hope that helps and I'm sorry to have interrupted.
No, it, that absolutely does help, that. That absolutely does help, um, and I just wish that we hadn't have started with that kind of confusion from that point of view. But I do feel like I, I'm clear on it, I hope members are on those grounds. Um, yeah, we will go ahead and vote as per the variation, um, to amend elevations. Okay. Okay, members, if you'd like to vote on that, please.
It's five in favour.
Okay, is there anyone against?
None.
Any abstentions?
One.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt, but they did say five. And from what I can see and hear, there is five without me. So are there six of us here?
There's six of us.
Yeah. And I voted.
Five have voted, five have voted for and one has abstained.
Okay. Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Yeah. This is really, really embarrassing because I can't see any, any.
Well, no, I, I, we can only see the plans in front of us. I know councillor, that's fine. Okay.
And councillor, not embarrassing, it's unfortunate technology, but it's not embarrassing at all. It shouldn't be. It's, it, it's a letdown of the technology, but that isn't, that's an embarrassment for the technology, not for any councillors.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Well, let's, let's move on. That has been carried. With quite a bit of relief from that point of view. And let's just, let's just go on to the next item, which is twenty O two O four two. And this is land, the rear of Nine Barton Villas, known as the secret garden, which I think we've just revealed where the secret garden is now. And it is a tree, felling of a tree, a cherry tree to be specific. Yeah. Councillor Moorhood, you have your electronic hand raised.
Oh, I was hoping you, someone else would say something first. I just wanted to. Um, yes, I am familiar with this. It's in the conservation area. It is. I do see that there is a detailed report on the value of the tree from Mark Waddams, the arboretum cultural officer. But I couldn't see that he, there was a conclusion at the end of it. So I, I would hope that if he is minded to allow the felling of the tree, that there be a requirement to replace somewhere on that, it's a very large back garden, a similar tree for several reasons. One, due to climate change and the necessity for trees. One due to biodiversity. I think these are the things we can mention to the arboretum cultural officer, although they may not be planning matters. And the other one is, this is a nursery school, so I would have thought that it's really important that these young children grow up seeing the importance of trees, watching it grow, having involvement in planning it wherever. How that can be worded into anything, I don't know, but I feel there, there's a, a bigger aspect to this than it appears from the application. Thank you.
Okay. Thank, thank you councillor Moorhood. I mean, I, I don't think we need to, unless anyone is having a burning desire to, to make any other points on this. I, I absolutely take your point councillor Moorhood. I'm happy to take this to the, you know, take the expertise of our arboretum cultural officer. I think we can add a recommendation that the, the owner of the property or the owner of the land, the secret garden, we recommend them to replace. And so, you know, the, the points that you raised for biodiversity reasons, for climate change reasons and for the encouragement of the children and other people, and other people that visit perhaps, education of the, yeah, exactly. And we could have that as a recommendation, but obviously we can't make that as part of it. But I think we, very often with these items, we do make that recommendation as per the recommendation from the arboretum culturalist. I think we will, we'll add those items as well. Councillor Moorhood, I'm happy to, to propose that from the chair. And add those recommendations as well. So did anyone else have anything else to say on this one? Or are you happy to, to go to the vote at this point? I'll, I'll open that up to you.
Everyone appears to be nodding in agreement to go to the vote, Chair.
Excellent. Then I'm very glad you're telling me that, Andrew, because I can't see. And that's, that's fine. So if we'll go to the vote, that we accept that as, as I mentioned, I won't make, mention it again.
That's unanimous, Chairman.
Thank you. Okay, we've got one other item on the agenda. Thank you for bringing us all back. Here we go. Councillor Law, we're all back now. And this is other matters requiring determination and the Langdon Hospital site to suggest two or three additional names for streets to be addressed to the site in addition to the following. These have been put forward by the developer. We've got Ballet Close, Feather Grove and Royal Way. And these are of a swan or river theme. I wonder if anyone has any, any further thoughts. Hopefully you've given it some thought. And councillor, councillor Moorhood, you have your hand raised.
Thank you councillor. And thank you, Madam Chair. Yes, I'm forever looking up things to do with duck boards and different things. And so I do have names of actual species of swans, which might well be appropriate, which I would like to ask everyone to consider. There are Bewick's swans, that is B E W I C K apostrophe S, that's important. So it could be Bewick Street, Bewick's Close, Bew, whatever. There are trumpeter swans, although we might not like the first part of that at the moment. There are trumpeter swans, which is again would lead, lead, lend themselves. There are whistling swans. And there are hooper swans, W H O O P E R. There's a small one called a coscaroba, but I don't think many people would have heard of that.
I think that might be a rather too large a sign, to be honest, councillor.
Then there's mute, then there's mute, black swan, white swan, but I, I'm, I'm really fascinated by these names of these different species. And I think.
No, I think. I think those are, those are good ideas, I must admit.
Just to remind you that Black Swan Way is the road from Sainsbury's round that goes down.
Yeah. Yeah.
But Bewick, Whistling and Hooper are all, I mean mute would be a bit of an odd one, a mute, mute cul-de-sac or something.
Mute, mute close. Well, we can, we, we, there's a reason behind them and they're breeds of different breeds of swan. And I think that.
Mute muse.
Yeah, mute muse or mute close. Okay. But we could certainly put those, those different breeds of, of swan forward. I mean, Feather Grove, I think is quite a weird one, but hey, I don't know. Councillor Heath, you have your finger raised.
Yes.
Or is it a wing? I'm not sure.
And blue hand, of course. Yeah, I think it's quite a good idea on the swan names, but old duck names. But it would be even more relevant if we could just check up or if anybody knows off the top of their head, the names of the normal wildfowl that we get on the, on the lawn, because then it would link up with Dawlish, not some exotic bird that only lives in South East Asia or something. So do, do we know any of the names of the common ducks that are here? Apart from black swan, of course. Yes.
Councillor Moorhood has her hand raised again.
I was just going to say that their request is to do with swans rather than the ducks, which is why I, I wasn't going to push the coscaroba one because there is some argument as to whether it's a, a swan or a duck or whatever. So. But they do particularly play swans.
Isn't there also, they've, they've put swan or river and isn't there, isn't it the river Avril that's across that way that comes through? Is, is Avril or something like that there or?
Or is that Segme?
I thought it was.
That might be Segme, yeah, but it's.
Right, well, I guess it's.
I don't know, that was said, that was that.
As, as it's the Langdon Hospital, maybe we should do it on a river theme like Calm Waters Way. It fits very well.
Well, I, we've, we've got a, we've got a mix of items there, Andrew. I'm hoping you've, you're obviously recording this. So we've got those items. I'm quite taken with the different types of swan. And let's just suggest, just make a note of what's been said and go from that. I think that's, yeah. We've got Ballet Close, they've suggested Feather Grove, Royal Way. Where the royals from? I've got no idea.
I don't like any of their names.
Oh, I don't.
No.
So ballet does not to me say swan. I can see they're going.
Yeah. Swan Lake.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a little bit, shall we say, light. A royal way. I'm not sure that's, that's, that doesn't really give the one thing. I, I much prefer councillor Moorhood's names of swan.
Yeah. Berix Trumpeter, Whistling and.
Bewick's, which is B E W I C K apostrophe S. Trumpeter, Whistling, I N.
It's a way.
We could have Trumps away.
Don't keep laughing. My, my maiden name is Trumpeter and I'm not going to admit to that. And the hooper swan is W H O O P E R.
Okay.
We'd, we then had Calm Waters Way.
Yeah, I think we could just lock the, and we'll just lock the way off maybe and just put Calm Waters. It might be a bit of a shorter sign that way.
Okay. And perhaps, Chairman, given recent events, you might like to include Signet.
Oh, yes, that was the other one on me.
Yeah. Yes, definitely. I'm sure, isn't there already a Signet close or something like that? So, no, if not, then that's fine. I think Signet's definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we've got one, two, three, four, five at least usable ones.
Yeah.
Which would replace those old ones.
I've a Signet Court. Is that, isn't that the, the industrial units at the end of Black Swan Way? Isn't that Signet Court down there?
Yes, there is something like that. Anyway. We'll see.
Yeah.
Well, we, yeah, I think we've given them a few things to think about.
Let, let's put it on the list and, and, and see whether we get pushback. But Team, Teambridge, or is it Devon who we're asking for this? It'd be Teambridge, right?
Teambridge street naming and numbering.
Yeah.
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 Yeah. So, well, they'll, they'll push back if it's, if it's already been used or it can be confused.
Yeah, that's fine.
The address of a similar name.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah. That's correct.
Councillor Wrigley's going on Google, I think.
I am. I was trying to come up with Signet Fort.
It's nice, it's nice to be asked and involved in these sort of things.
It is, it is. It's nice. It's a nice way to, to end the meeting from that point of view, on a, on a high, so to speak, after all the horrible news that we've had this week about the, the black swans, et cetera. So make something positive out of that. So. Yeah. Thank you, members. That's everything for this evening. So thank you for your time and yours, Andrew, as well. Thank you very much. So I'll close the meeting on this, on this item. So thank you very much for your input, everybody.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thank you. Good evening.
Bye.
Bye bye.